Good morning. My name is Wyatt Shields. I'm the city manager and I'm joined by Dr. Tony Jones, Superintendent of Schools. Thank you all for being here this morning. We are going to have a briefing this morning for the public on the process that we're underway for the George Mason High School campus. And so that's the purpose of today's meeting. We have a number of slides and some information that we will get out and then we'll have a question period and comment period at the end as well. We do have microphones and this meeting is being taped so that we can put it on the web and have people access this information that way as well as on their cable channel. And before we get started, I'll just also note that we have restrooms. Facilities are on the G2 level, the police level in the building if you need to use the facilities. And of course, the emergency exits are that way and that way. Mayor Tarter, would you like to make any welcoming remarks before we get started?
Sure. Just briefly, I wanted to thank you all for coming out today. I'd also like to acknowledge my colleague from council, Mayor Beth Connelly, in the back row. But I just want to thank you all for coming out. I know this is a matter of great importance to our community. It's one of the grandest things that we have contemplated here. And so it's an important time for us. But it's challenging as well because there are rules and regulations that limit what can be publicly disseminated. And so we're trying, as council has wanted to do, as the school board has also wanted to do, push out as much information as we're lawfully allowed to do so that you all are as informed as you can be about the process and we can have as much input from you all as well as we go through this time. So thank you for coming out and I'm very interested to hear what you have to say.
Thank you, Mayor Tarter. And Dr. Jones?
I also want to acknowledge we have two members of our school board here today. Karen Sharp in the back who's been working on this project with us. And then also John Lawrence, our vice chair of the school board is here. Mr. Castillo sends regrets today. His child is doing an Eagle Scout project, so he's being a parent this morning. And we'll go ahead and get started. We want to start out by just reviewing a little bit of the process because we know there are people in the room that have come to a lot of meetings over the last two years and then there are always people who this may be their first meeting. So when we look at our joint planning process, we started by asking one question and it is really, first of all, why do we need a new or renovated high school? And it's important to note that George Mason is at capacity today. The reason we have enough seats for students is we have some old trailers that we've been using for a long time and those trailers are still there. We are also going to be at capacity at Mary Ellen Henderson very shortly. It's a newer building, but all of Northern Virginia has been dealing with enrollment pressures and enrollment growth in Northern Virginia that's filling up schools quickly, not just us, in this whole region. MEH is built for 600. We have about 40 seats left in that building, so it is almost at capacity. The HVAC at George Mason is failing. It's a real challenge for us to keep heat and keep air and all of those things running in a building that was built in 1954 and the systems in general are very old in that building. It also needs a new roof. And people that have been in attendance over the last two years to events in our auditorium or just in the school in general, it's not unlikely to see buckets out in the hall catching rain. Doesn't mean we're not trying to keep up with the roof. What we're trying to do is not over-invest millions and millions of dollars in the roof and other systems while we're working through this process. So we do work on it all the time, but every time we have a heavy snow, a new leak will pop up. We just have challenges in a very old building. We also need upgraded wiring for the modern world. We are a very progressive high school where you have a lot of technology integration. It's tough to find places just to charge a laptop. There's not a lot of even outlets in that building. We also have very poor ADA access. There is an elevator and we, of course, keep that up to speed, but there are ramps and stairs. It's not a very accessible building. And it also needs upgraded safety features. It needs a new intercom system. It needs door controls. It has between, and I say between because I've never gone around and actually counted them, it's between 75 and 95 doors. And in the day and the age in which we live, that is not a safely designed high school. You want a central entrance for your students. And it also needs that center entrance and exit point. So there are just lots of issues with that building. Wyatt's going to talk a little bit about the process to date.
Thank you. And so the city council and the school board issued a request for proposals in late July and we received two proposals in response to that in October. But I want to first just back up a little bit. How did we get to that point to issue a request for proposals for our school facilities and for economic development on the campus site? When the city sold the water system to Fairfax Water, we did a boundary adjustment to bring our 34-acre campus into the city limits. And at that time, the city council and the school board appointed a process planning committee to sit down and sort of lay out the steps for evaluating the future for this campus. And they produced a roadmap. And then the city council appointed a steering committee to implement and oversee the steps of that roadmap. And as Dr. Jones mentioned, the steering committee was composed of the chair of the planning commission, the economic development authority, two members of the school board, and two members of the city council. We had a whole series of meetings to do the initial planning for the site. Couple of the big steps in that planning work was to reach out to our neighbors to discuss what their future plans might be. That's UVA and Virginia Tech and that's Womata principally. We also commissioned a test fit, a space fit analysis, and Dr. Jones will speak about that. And we had an Urban Land Institute study about the economics of the site and what its potential would be for economic development. And so as we were doing that planning work, the city received an unsolicited proposal from Edgemore, which is an affiliate of Clark Construction. We evaluated that proposal for about two months and then decided not to accept that unsolicited proposal. But we did decide to issue, to move forward under a public-private partnership structure to solicit additional proposals for the development of the school facilities and potentially economic development as well. And that was issued again in late July and the proposals were received on October 30th. So we're evaluating the two proposals that we received. One proposal received from Republic Properties and the other proposal received from Edgemore. We have put together a team of consultants. This is a complex proposal and a complex endeavor. And so the city has put together a team to help us evaluate these proposals and evaluate our next steps as we move through this procurement process. And also to evaluate whether we want to proceed with the next steps of this procurement process. But some of the key players that we have enlisted to help us, our, the city's financial advisor for all of our debt issuance is Davenport, and so they're part of our team. Tishler Vice is doing our fiscal impact analysis. Troutman Sanders is their outside legal counsel and they've had a lot of experience with PPEA projects in our region and across the state. Arcadis is the city's longtime partner and project manager for school facilities, going back to the Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School project. And the latest member of our team is Commercial Real Estate Advisory Services to help value the site and also to help us evaluate deal structure. If we're to do a land exchange for value to the city to help us with those negotiations. And Savile Studley is a member of the team for that purpose. So when we talk about our neighbors, again, our site is 34.6 acres. That's the Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School and High School site. Immediately adjacent to us, that parcel number four is owned by the city and leased to UVA and Virginia Tech. That's about an eight-acre site. The terms of that lease really put it essentially out of the city's control. The terms of that lease give control of that land to UVA and Virginia Tech for all intents and purposes. The little parcel five is owned outright by UVA. And then the parcels three, that's owned by Womata and that's about 24 acres of principally parking lot around the west Falls Church metro station. So throughout this two-year planning process, we've been in touch with our neighbors. We've invited them to be involved in it to give us their insights about what they think the future of their property is going to be. They're all big institutions and their decision-making process is slow and somewhat opaque to us. And so we have proceeded to pursue proposals for the development of our site that is not dependent upon what our neighbors might do. But we've tried to bring them into the process so that their planning could be incorporated with ours. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Jones to talk about the space fit study that was done in 2014.
So with the steering committee, one of the first questions that we needed to ask was on this property, is there an opportunity to compact the high school, compact the footprint of the high school? When I say footprint, we're just talking about how much land it actually takes up. And when you look at the picture of our middle school, which is a new building, and then you look at the picture of our high school, there's not a great deal of difference in square feet when you compare the two buildings. But because this is a 1950s building that's just been added on to over time, it takes up a lot of land. So we needed to ask and have a professional team, and we actually brought in RTKL, and asked them, can we actually fit on 70 percent, is 70 percent of the land enough to accommodate a high school for 1,500 students? Because we're also looking again at enrollment growth and having more students than we have today. And what they were able to tell us by doing test fits on that property is yes, it can be done. Not that we are going to do it. It was just an informational study for the school board, city council, for all of us to answer that question. And they looked at some different zones on the property. And the one that, the slide that's up now is where you're looking at the acreage on Haycock and Route 7, which could be developed. They also looked at the parcel where the football field is. And by looking at both of those scenarios, they were able to determine that in fact, we could compact a high school. And what you're looking at on some of these slides, it'll show you where they've moved the field. If you look towards Haycock, this actual picture has the high school and the middle school connected, which is something that we had asked for. When you look at the white on this slide, they're showing how the high school could tuck in behind the middle school. And again, it's compacting because it's going up. And the one thing I'd like to remind people is going up for Falls Church City is really not new for us. It is in high school just because we have an old high school. But we have our, Thomas Jefferson Elementary School is three stories. What we're planning even for our K-1 building is multi-story. When you look at Mary Ellen Henderson, it's three stories of instructional, but it's actually four because the students go down for PE and health on the lower level. So thinking about a multi-story building is not a new thought process for us. It's a different way to think about high school. Steering Committee Project Number Two, Mr. Shields is going to talk about, which they brought in the ULI, Urban Land Institute study.
The Urban Land Institute put together a technical assistance panel and spent a very concentrated period of time studying our site. It was not a long-term study. It was a group of experts that got together essentially for two days to study the site. And they came forward with recommendations for, that the highest economic value land, their recommendation was along the corner of Haycock and Broad Street. They envisioned retail on the ground floor. The blue buildings are office buildings. The yellow buildings were residential buildings. And the red building was envisioned as some sort of an entertainment use or skating or theater or that type of thing. They had a sort of a concept of an Agora concept where the commercial would mix with educational facilities. This was really basically just a massing model. That's not what the buildings would look like. But they were just trying to assess what the market would want to do if they were commercial developers looking at this property. And so they looked at that. They also evaluated what the fiscal impact would be, what the value of the land would be, and gave us a sense that under their recommendations, they thought that approximately 60 percent, between 60 and 80 percent of the school facilities could be covered through the economic development program. So that was a study, just to sort of truth test some of our assumptions about, is economic development viable on this site? What kind of revenues might it generate? What kind of market interest might it generate? And so that was helpful as part of the overall planning process. And then importantly, the schools undertook a visioning study and I'll, or a visioning effort with the community, and I'll let Dr. Jones speak to that.
And our first visioning was actually back in 2013, 14, where we kind of gathered the community and looked at many different things about what we wanted to work on as a school system and what our community valued. And a new high school was one of the components that emerged from that first visioning. Beyond that, then we started with this project specifically, a community-wide visioning that was held on June 6 of 2015. And that was really to invite people from all across the community to come together in one room and to talk about what's really important, what we need to be thoughtful about in building a new high school, what are the questions that we need to answer. We also had a school of the future visioning in October, just recently, again, where we were really looking at some specific issues like sustainability that we know are really important to a lot of members of our community. Our outreach reports, these are all online and they're very detailed reports. So I encourage you, if you have a real interest and you haven't gone to the website, or if you need us to get you a hard copy, we're happy to do that for you. But there's some great reports from both of those visionings that take all of the comments from those meetings and really put them into some sense of what came out of the meeting as a collective group. What were those things we agreed on? We looked at, when we brought everybody together, there were over 200 people at Mary Ellen Henderson, and both of these were very, very well attended. So, and from a cross-section of the community, which we were really pleased about. We had city council, school board, there were city employees, there were people there that don't have children in the system, have never had children in the system, and also Fairfax County, Womata, Virginia Tech. We've had a lot of the people we feel like are very valuable to us at these visionings. And again, I encourage you to go look online if you haven't, if you weren't able to participate and look at the report. There's also video about that. And some of the experts that spoke at the last one were phenomenal, really did a wonderful, wonderful job. We gathered the community thoughts on some specific elements that we felt were very important. Looking at school design, you know, is our community okay with a 10-story high school or a four-story high school? Well, when we came out of the visioning, it's four to six stories. That was very, very clear. We're okay to go up with a high school. And again, probably easier for even school community to think about that or have their children already in a multi-story building, but four to six. Landscape and sustainability, maintaining as much green space for our children as possible, healthy environment, site access and circulation, really thinking about, we want to keep the site as safe as possible. Where do you drop children off? How does car traffic work? How can we make it more walkable and more inviting to have more students walking to school? Also with the middle school expansion, looking at how will we expand a middle school? Do we want middle school and high school totally separate where they don't interact? Or do we want some connection? And out of this visioning, that was also very clear that our community wants connection between middle and high school. Doesn't mean it's one school, but what it does do is give our eighth graders that want to take an advanced class at high school could walk down a hall where there's a connection, or they could walk across a small crosswalk and get to the school. But our community wants some connection. And adjacent development, that we need to be very thoughtful if anything develops on that property about what would be there and the type of development, and just be thoughtful about that. We also, just to point out, when we look that we are building for 1,500 students, one of the questions that we always get, well, why is it so big? Because we think Falls Church is being very small. We do have our projections. Every October ran by Weldon Cooper, which is the center out of UVA. They do all of the school enrollment projections for the Virginia Department of Education. They also do a lot of census work. And Weldon Cooper gives us our projections and they look out, right now they're struggling to go past about 15 years because of what's happening in this region. It's very difficult. They will tell you, when you start looking 15 and 20 years out, could it be more? Could it be less? So they give us a range of enrollment projection. And I do have some of those projection sheets here today, for those of you that would like to see those. But we do have professionals who do our enrollment projections. And we are growing in Northern Virginia. And this region is pulling kids from other areas of Virginia where they're actually losing enrollment as well as just having new people move to the region. And we work very closely with the city. And this is another question I think Mr. Shields and I get, and I can say with pride, I really do believe that our school and our city have a better handle on the enrollment aspects and tying that to economic development than any of my other superintendent colleagues in this region. And it's because, in some regards, we were ahead of the curve in that we've tried to be very thoughtful about what is happening in our city. We look at condos, we look at apartments, we look at single-family homes. Then we go in and we actually look at if there's a new development like Pearson Square, which is relatively new, or the Spectrum. We have a system where we are literally drilling down to looking at one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms. How many children do we expect to get from those developments? And how many, what is the trend right now that we're seeing? And city and school staff really work hard together. And I have the newest chart for that today here as well, for anybody that has an interest in that, because that helps us when we look at any new development that's going to be coming into the city. So when we say they're going to have X amount of two bedrooms or X amount of one bedrooms, how can we project how many students could live there? And we feel like right now, we have the best system we could, really. And the last slide before I turn it back over to Wyatt, is looking at the natural growth trend. And I like to have this up here because I think it's important for people to understand what is happening in the region. When you look at the bottom line, the city is also growing. Our population is growing in all aspects, whether it's apartments, single-family homes. But when you look at the top line, what you're seeing is the student growth. And what that means is more of our growth in this city are people who are moving here that have children. We have more families with children in Falls Church City than families who don't have children. So the student number is growing at a much faster rate than the actual population rate.
So I'll speak a little bit about public-private partnerships. And why are we considering that for this site? And in Virginia, when people talk about public-private partnerships, they talk about the act that was adopted in 2002 by the General Assembly that allows local governments to pursue public-private partnerships to accomplish school programs or fire stations or build roads or whatever the case may be. The city's history with them, we were one of the early adopters of PPEA with the fire station project with Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School, the TJ project, as well as the factory. We're all built under the PPEA. Fairfax County's been a heavy user of the PPEA as well. The Wheelie Parking Garage is a PPEA project right now. The South County High School was built under the PPEA, the Reston Town Center and other projects like that. And we do, we try to learn a lot from Fairfax County with our friends there about their experiences, particularly with one that is more complex than what our history has been. This one is more complex because we're talking about the potential for a land exchange as part of this public-private partnership. Some of the pros and cons to this procurement process, the pros are that you get a lot of coordination right from the beginning of the planning with the designers, with the people who are going to build it, with your finance team. Under traditional design, bid and build, a lot of those functions are in silos. And so you put together all of your designs, you have no idea what they might cost. Well, you have an idea of what they might cost, but you can really be surprised when you actually go out and procure it and you open up the sealed bids and you find out what it ultimately will cost. There's the ability to do some risk sharing between the city and the private partner, and that's a big issue for us on this site. If you look at our site, one of the big issues is the land exchange doesn't really become available until the new school is fully built and occupied so that you can demolish the old. So there's a gap. The Urban Land Institute identified that gap when they were thinking about this problem. We've been thinking about it for two years. How do you bridge the fact that we could have the liabilities of a very expensive, for the city, high school program without the value of the economic development? How do you bridge that gap? And so through a public-private partnership, we're exploring some ways that we might be able to bridge that gap. With the PPEA, you're able to leverage private resources for the benefit of the city. Now, if you think about what we've done, we've put out a request for proposals with a pretty well-defined school program, but a pretty open idea as to what the private sector might do in terms of the land exchange, in terms of the financing structure, in terms of economic development on that site. And in essence, what we're asking the private sector to do is give us their ideas for free. Now, ultimately, we'll negotiate an agreement. But through this procurement process, we really have the opportunity to learn a lot about the value of the property, what the potential for the property is, and to do that without paying for a whole lot of planning consultants on our end. Some of the cons of it, the negotiations will be lengthy and complex. And, you know, ultimately, if we are successful with this avenue, we'll have a comprehensive agreement. It's going to be very thick and it'll be complicated. And so hence the need for good expertise on our side to help us with that. A significant issue with PPEA, wherever it's done across Virginia, is the limits on the transparency during that competitive negotiation process. So we've put out a request for bids. We have two people who are competing with each other to do this work here in the city. But their ideas on how it can be done are proprietary. And we have to protect that for them. Now, that's to the city's interests because we can ideally negotiate a good deal for the taxpayers of the city through that competitive process. But it does require that as we're going through that process, we have to maintain the integrity of the confidential information. And then lastly, you know, particularly for the economic development piece and the details of the school design, a lot of those can be left fluid as you're going through the negotiation process. That can be both a pro and a con, but it does mean that things might not be nailed down until fairly late in the negotiation process. So here's the schedule that the city council and the school board laid out last May when the decision was made not to accept the unsolicited proposal that I mentioned a while ago, but instead to issue a competitive RFP to bring in more proposals. And so we received the conceptual proposals on October 30th. We're evaluating them right now. What we anticipate doing is learning from those proposals and then putting out, the next really big decision for the city council and the school board will be the issuance of the Phase II RFP, and that's the Request for Detailed Proposals. And in that document, we anticipate that we'll provide more guidance to the proposals in terms of what we're looking for, both on the terms of the school program, but also in terms of the economic development program, the financing structures that the city will require in order for the respondents to be successful in that next step in the procurement process. And assuming that goes well, then we would begin negotiations with both respondents and then pick the top-selected respondent and move towards an interim agreement with the top-ranked respondent. That interim agreement will have two big contingencies. And one contingency will be that once you have that initial agreement signed, it becomes a public document. Everybody can look at it. Everyone can study it. And then the voters will decide whether we'll proceed or not. And so that, those months of August, September, October will be a full discussion of the agreement of the development program and the voters will decide whether we proceed or whether we do not proceed. Another key thing that will happen throughout this process, and we need to sort of lay out ourselves exactly how we will do this, but we also need to go through the land entitlement process. Wherever the economic development happens, we need to do a comp plan amendment. We need to zone that property and we need to entitle it per the development program that the developer has laid out. That will be a wide-open, public process and the planning commission will have a major role in that as well as all of our boards and commissions and public comment as we go through that process. So the interim agreement is a big step because we will lay down a pathway that we think can be successful, but that will ultimately be subject to the voter's approval and think can be successful, but that will ultimately be subject to the voter's approval and through the land entitlement process. So in the RFP that was issued in late July, we articulate, it's a lengthy document, but these four big goals are articulated in that request for proposals. And those are to replace or renovate the high school and expand the Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School, to redevelop up to 10.3 acres of the parcels for commercial uses that will benefit the city and its residents, create a sense of place, and that's really important for this. The economic development, we're viewing as a vehicle to potentially help mitigate and pay for the costs of the school program, but it is critical that the economic development be something that the community likes, that it create a sense of place, that it has amenities and design and features that the community will embrace. If it doesn't pass that test, we're not going to be successful here, and we'll have, you know, have a public process to evaluate that through the land entitlement process ultimately. C, to provide the short- and long-term economic benefit of the redevelopment. So one of the, there's two big aspects to the financing of the economic development piece. One is the land exchange, so the sale or the lease of the property, but then also the tax yield from the future development ultimately that will happen. So that's a key goal here. And then D, in terms of process, the city council and the school board have designed this to be, and wanted this to be, a competitive process between the potential of the proposers. I'm going to just shift real quickly. If you go online, on the back table, we printed out copies of the public portions of the proposals that we received, and they got gobbled up quickly. But I just want people to be able to see, if you go on the city webpage, what's available. And so if you go to the campus redevelopment part of the city's webpage, you will see prior studies that we referred to, the RTKL study, the ULI study, and that type of information. But you also have the proposals from Edgemore and from Mason Green. And I'll just show a little bit of what's available. This is the Mason Green's proposal. They have an executive summary of their proposal. They have the list of all of their teams, the developers, the financial consultants, the architects, the whole team that they've put together. And similarly, for Edgemore, they provide their executive summary and a list of all of the people that are on their team. And so that's the information that's available at this point. Their detailed financial proposals are not public at this point, nor is the economic development program they're proposing. Both of those are proprietary information at this point, so that their competitors can't take their ideas and make their proposals better. But the city has transparency on both, and will negotiate the best possible outcome from the two proposals. That's our goal. So that's a quick overview of information that we have at this point. And so we'd like to now stop the presentation piece and open it up for questions or comments. And I will just note again that this is being taped, and so the purpose of the microphone is not really to help us all here in the room, it's to help those who might be downloading this video so they can watch it. And I want to thank our cable access staff for being here on this Saturday as well. So we'll pass, we have a microphone here, and, okay. I'll have to follow instructions, that's dangerous.
Are you off?
I'm off now. So if anyone, just raise your hand, would, you just say your name, and, or a question that you have.
Hi, I'm Cecily Shea, and my question is, when the detailed proposals are submitted in March, will those be made public?
Detailed proposals will be, will have confidential portions to them, similar to the conceptual phase. And so they will provide an executive summary of their detailed responses, but probably the detailed pieces of the financial, they will choose to keep that confidential. So what we anticipate doing, though, as you get further along in the procurement process, we think there are more and more opportunities for people to meet the proposers, possibly to give them an opportunity to speak publicly about what they're proposing. We have to be careful ourselves about what we say about what they propose, because we might mischaracterize it, or they might object to how we've characterized it. And so we may give them an opportunity to speak publicly about their proposals. But really, the public engagement would happen, what we would anticipate would be over the summer and fall months, as we go up to the referendum and through the land entitlement process. I don't know if you have anything you would add to that.
Kathy Thompson, I have several questions. Some of them are just technical questions, so I might run them together, and you can stop me. First of all, you seem to have used the word about the third party either leasing or selling the land. Is that one of the issues open for discussion, actually buying the land versus leasing it? Is that one of the things open for discussion? You seem to use that interchangeably. Is that one of the issues open for discussion in their proposals, whether they'll actually buy the 10.3 acres or lease it?
In the city's request for proposal, we ask for proposals for either the lease of the property or for the sale.
Okay, so that's one of the things they will be proposing to us.
That's correct.
Okay, so that was just a technical question. And another technical question, can a third entity enter in January or March, or we have two proposals and that's all we'll be dealing with?
Just the two.
Okay, so there'll be no new entrants?
That's correct.
Okay, even with the January/March. Then, where along the discussion process, which I assume it took place at some point, was there a discussion between doing a public-private partnership versus doing a bond issue and just having the citizens of Falls Church City pay for this and use all the land for public purposes and no commercial development? Where was that discussion along the way in here?
They, you know, that's an important question, and I think it's been in people's minds every step of the way. Is this the best way for us to go? And so part of the value of putting out the request for proposals is really test, what can we get for the land? And is it good enough that it makes it worthwhile for the other things that we lose with having some of our land go into private development? And that's really the process of discernment that we're engaged in right now.
So there is a possibility that come June, the leadership of Falls Church City may decide, maybe we should ask the citizens for a bond issue rather than having the use of land that I'm saying, we're never going to be able to get back once we have commercial development on it. So I'm just saying, that is still a possibility out of all this, come next summer? That decision will be, maybe we shouldn't, it seems like we're going down this route with no one saying, how much would a bond issue cost us to do this?
Well, I think the city council and the school board both have tried to articulate at every, when they issued the RFP, that they're in charge. At any point, they can stop this procurement process, they can say, you know, we've learned a lot through this, but we've decided we're going to go a different route. And so that option is available to the city council and the school board at every step in the way, until we've entered into an agreement. And so, you know, the evaluation will be...
And the high-level team.
And the high-level team, yeah. With the advice of our commercial real estate advisors, our financial advisors, et cetera.
Okay, and I promise this is my last question. So if we get all the way to a November referendum, and the citizens vote against this, at the same time are you working on a Plan B about the high school's leaky roof, et cetera? Or, well, then if the referendum is thumbs-down, is there a parallel discussion going on as far as, if it's not accepted, what will be the steps for, especially for the high school?
I think it is one step at a time, but I think one thing we have to consider with the high school, again, is that it's at capacity now. So it's not even just the leaky roof, and, I mean, you can't just renovate that school, you have to expand. So that's a whole nother issue. And if we don't expand, and the citizens said, we're not going to have a bigger high school, we would have an awful lot of trailers, like they had at Marshall, up the street for many years. I think they had 20-some-odd trailers behind their school. Right now, we have six. So you have to have space for children by law, so that would be the challenge.
And I think that's what's so great about this process, like having the town halls, that, you know, when you get close to a referendum, we do a lot of these, just like we do during the budget time, and hear from the community, and have ample opportunity for the community to weigh in. And if the community voted a bond issue down, then we would be doing more of these to make sure that whatever direction we would go in meets what the community is telling us, because ultimately, it is our taxpayers.
About this, do you envision November vote also including a bond issue, since I think you said 80%, only 80% would be covered? That, so we'd be wrapping up a bond issue with the proposal, as in one vote? Is that too far in advance to envision?
I think everyone should envision that if we're going to do the high school program, either through this P3 method, or simply as just the city going it alone, either way, we're going to be issuing a significant bond issuance. The, and so the voters will weigh in on that in any event. The P3 approach is really just trying to gear towards, is there a way that we could lock in and have some guarantees for value for land and for potentially some guarantees, now that's the more tenuous piece, but a partner to deliver economic development that will help lower the cost of that bond issuance for the taxpayers? That's really what we're trying to discern through this process.
This is sort of a follow-on question. Can you articulate what the referendum question might look like?
Yeah, that's a, that's a key question. The referendum, as I just said, will certainly have a component to it about the issuance of the debt. And that's in the city, by city council resolution, any debt issuance that exceeds 10% of the city's annual operating budget requires voter approval. And so this will certainly meet that test. But the other aspects of the referendum question are things that we'll need to work out. Will the question be beyond simply the bond issuance, but address other aspects of what we're proposing here? And I don't have a definitive answer on that. We'll have to work with legal counsel about the phrasing of what exactly would be on the ballot.
Surely, it won't involve things as elementary as, should the high school be six stories or five stories, or something else? It's not advisory in that sense.
I would not say for sure that that would happen. That's not been the city's tradition to put those types of questions on a referendum. The city's tradition has been to put the financial question on the ballot, but have those other details not be part of the referendum. But I think that can be part of a discussion. Ultimately, the city council will vote on the language that's placed on the ballot, so that's a public decision as well.
Do you want to go over there?
Let's go here, since you're there, and then we'll come here to the front.
Thanks. My name's Steve. First, thanks for taking your Saturday morning and presenting to us this morning. It's good to see what's going on. I have two questions. The first is, I think, a follow-up to Kathy's question, which is, one of my worries is if we, if the public can reject the referendum next November, and we've kind of lost a year of the time we have to plan for the new school, given the population growth and whatnot, is there any way legally, as part of this PPEA process, that we could simultaneously put together a small team to study an alternative that would be city-funded, or funded by some other means? So if this referendum gets rejected, we haven't sort of lost a year of planning for the new high school, and we've got some alternative that we've already been construing and thinking about?
I think that's a good question, and also say thank you for spending your Saturday morning here. I think from my perspective, and, you know, with the team that we have together, and the staff effort, and the council and school board effort, we think it's the best use of our time to pursue this avenue as thoughtfully as we can, and sort of dedicate ourselves to really thinking through all the ramifications of it, which is sufficiently complex for us. Now, we have in the back of our minds, there might be other ways to get this accomplished, but since we have put this, you know, the decision was made to put this RFP out, we'd like to really explore this as deeply as we can before going off in alternate directions. That's my personal view of it, just from a management perspective of trying to handle something that's pretty complex. I don't know if you would have any additional comments?
Well, I would just say, the work that we're doing on the school side, which is also incredibly complex, about designing a new high school, all of the work that we're doing won't be lost, even if we had a no on a referendum and we needed to look at it differently, because, you know, we are literally meeting with, having the architects meet with our high school teachers, talking about what does a 21st-century high school look like in comparison. So we're meeting with students, we have student groups just next week. So all of this community weighing on how tall a high school could be, what do our teachers think, and what's important to them, and do we need a second field? Yes, we know we do, especially with a growing high school. All of that is there. So the school program is going to be very, very solid. And, you know, if you had a referendum that we got a no because of a reason that you're talking about, where people would just rather go and pay for the high school instead of a different model, you could take all the work that we've done, put an RFP out very, very quickly, and get proposals coming back in. So, and I will just add the two, the other thing that makes me feel great on the school side, is it is public, who's part of the team. And the two architecture teams who have responded are outstanding, absolutely outstanding, and highly, highly regarded in school construction. So that's great for us to know as well.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be good, because it seems like, in order to, we only got two proposals back, which is a little bit thin in terms of the competition we may have hoped for. And to get some leverage in the situation, if we looked like we had some alternative we were considering, which it sounds like you are, then our negotiations with these parties, at least we would have an alternative that we could sort of rely upon as we negotiate. My second question is, in terms of the cost, so one of the items that I think drives the need for a lot of economic development activity is sort of the expected cost of the new high school and the enhancements to MEH. But I've been trying to benchmark some other districts and get a sense for what's possible, and see if there's any alternative in plan. And, you know, the easiest way to do this is to sort of look at where our teams are playing, and when you go see your daughter or your son play, go see their high school. So, you know, Clark built a, their new high school's a 1,200-student high school that they built, building cost for 19.5 million. Loudoun High School, which is a bigger school, it's a 2,000-student high school, is a $40.1 million project. Is there any way, and then on the extreme, Wakefield's very expensive. Wakefield in Arlington is a 2,000-student school where the building cost was 75 million. Is there any way, though, to look at how bad is what some of these other ones are building? And can we get into an envelope like that, that might give us more flexibility?
I will tell you, we have done a tremendous amount of homework in that. And I actually have a chart that has all of those schools listed, what the price per square foot was when they built. You know, Clark got, Clark was doing this many years ago, several years ago, and that's what's happened to us in Falls Church, is every year we wait to tackle this project, construction costs are going up. And, you know, when I look at even where we compare to Marshall, you know, Marshall did their first bid for their renovation expansion, I want to say it was 2,000, I have it on a chart in my office, I think it's maybe 2009 or '10, construction costs have gone up. You know, some of these high schools around us that we're trying to compare to were building right coming out of the, when the economy was not strong. That's not what's happening in construction right now. And the price per square foot, what we have had in Falls Church recently is right in the ballpark of what everybody's building. And it'll usually range somewhere between $225 a square foot up to 350. We put 350 in our CIP, because if it does take us five years to get through a process, we didn't know when we first put it in the CIP two years ago, we know construction's going to go up. So we do all of those cost comparisons. And then we go in and we look at things in those high schools. What would we want to emulate? What would we not want to emulate? We are a much more progressive high school than many of the high schools that you've mentioned, in that just technology integration, the STEAM aspects that we're working on, the collaboration from teachers, from a history teacher wanting to work with a science teacher. So we're also... a science teacher. So we're also looking at school designs around the world that have more flexibility in them than some of the box designs. Because some of the new high schools, when you go and you look at them now, you generally walk in the front door, and it's amazing, these big, beautiful, open spaces. You go to the academic wing, and really, other than newer tile and paint, they look just like they did in the 1950s, they're just boxes. And so our staff want to be much more thoughtful about a new high school. So we're looking at all of that, and we have really done our homework looking at all those other schools. Clark actually took a middle school design. And so if you talk to teachers that are in that building, it doesn't necessarily fit what they necessarily would like to have had for a high school. But it was cheaper, because they didn't have to pay the design cost either. But they also got a building that was built for middle school, and it's a high school. So it had some changes that had to be made. But we're being very thoughtful about looking at all of those.
Hi, I'm Steve Marshall. I have a number of questions, too. There's a long prelude before we got to the question and answer part. So trying to go back a little bit. When you talk about, you were talking to our neighbors, and apparently didn't get much from them, let's assume that sometime in the next few months, you hear something from UVA, Virginia Tech, and have better visioning as to how maybe we can use that parking lot jointly. Can that fit into the process we currently have, or has that bus left?
I think that there are options that could change what the proposals are today. Suppose UVA and Virginia Tech came forward and said, "We want in," just as a hypothetical. I think the proposers would say, "Okay, well, let's see how we could work that in." Now, that would need to happen under our current schedule, in the next, essentially in the next three months, probably. And so that's really the value of being in touch with our neighbors for a matter of years now about what we're doing. So they know our schedule, they know what we're doing. We are mindful of the fact that we're, if you look at what's adjacent to us, it's essentially twenty-eight acres of, thirty acres of parking lot. And so naturally, you do think there's some opportunities there, where that land could be used more effectively than it is being used right now. But again, their institutional decision-making process has not been synced up with ours yet. And it would need to, one thing that I think as we're doing, as we're considering proposals, we will be mindful of how they could integrate with what might happen on our neighbors in the future. And so we will, that's one of our design criteria, is that the infrastructure and the roads and that type of thing need to line up in an intelligent way with things that might happen there in the future.
So it doesn't sound like there's much hope there, frankly?
The window is open, but it's going to start closing. Yeah.
And do the developers also have the opportunity to negotiate with these people? Or is that through the city, that any of that would happen?
They're certainly free to have discussions with their neighbors, and I think they have been having discussions with their neighbors.
You talked about the proposal, some of the proprietary stuff. You mentioned mostly financials and economic impact. The thing that, when I was looking through there, that I was looking for and did not get a sense of at all, is anything about the school. What the design is, what, you know, any aspect of the details of what the school might be. Is that somewhere down the road, or is that in there in proprietary now?
Yeah, that's in there, and that's proprietary now.
So how, the community never has an opportunity until next summer to get an understanding of what the school design is?
And I will say, in school construction, that's actually pretty typical. Because even if we were doing a design build, we would be, we would have an ASAC, is what we call it. It's our Architectural Selection and Design Committee, as a school, that would have different representatives, and you'd be working with the architectural firm to start putting the school together. We'd be meeting with staff. We'd be doing all the things we're doing right now, the weigh-in, that the visioning, what do you want to see in a high school? We want it four stories, we want it six stories. We're gathering all of that information, they would be putting it together. And about by summer, we would be making sure the community knew exactly what they're going to be voting on. And that's where we should be if we go forward with this process. So you'll know, you'll have ample opportunity to look at what that high school design would be like, if you're going to vote yes or no on a referendum.
What one of them would look like. The interim one that has been accepted will look like. Not what both corresponding bids look like, just the one that has been selected to go forward. Is that right?
Even in a detailed proposal, what I would say, though, is that when you vote in a referendum on a proposal, there's still a tremendous amount of work that happens, even after the referendum. Because you have a detailed design, but there are going to be lots of changes that the community will make to even that design after you get a yes referendum. So let's say you have a four-story building, and they don't like where the science wing is. When you get your large community committee that's working with the architects on, "Well, we can move this room here and this room here," the basic footprint of where a school's located on the campus, you wouldn't anticipate would change. You know, if they proposed a four-story building, that probably would not change, because it would take huge changes to the proposal to, "Oh, let's have a two-story instead of a six-story." So those things are pretty. But what happens inside the school, there's still a lot of flexibility and community weigh-in that happens even after a referendum. What colors, and, you know, the materials, and things like that.
Okay, so the details that are in the proposals now are really just footprint, where it's going to be located, and size, and maybe the type of rooms that are in it?
What we actually do, if you go back and you look at the request for proposal, the RFP, there's a very detailed school program in there. And it says, "We want X amount of rooms, we want them this big." And it's so that they know, because otherwise, how would they even price a high school if they don't know what we're asking for? So we look at how many students we project, what's the square feet that we will need to accommodate for a cafeteria, where we're going to have a high school of 1,500 students, what is the square feet you need in a gym to have ample seating? All of that was in the request for a proposal. It's in, the school program itself is probably, I don't know, four inches. I mean, it's really, really a lot of document, and it is available online as well. Very detailed.
And the building that we're building is for, I think you said, 1,500 students?
That's correct.
And that's based on those projections you were showing. On those projections, are there upper and lower boundaries on those? Eighty, twenty?
There are always, you have low, middle, and high ranges. And that's kind of what I referenced earlier. It's difficult, even for the expertise of Weldon Cooper, to say what's going to happen in Falls Church City 20 years from now. What we can do is, they do an excellent job on a five-year model, because they're looking at birth rate. So they look at how many children are actually born in Falls Church City, they look at the migration patterns that are happening in Northern Virginia, and then they start to project out. And you, the other thing that happens in school growth is the cohort of children. When they start in kindergarten, if you have a class size of 200, that compounds every year. They tend to grow. And so, over time, and that, you can look back 20 years, and usually, when they're doing those projections, depending on what's happening in the region and what growth looks like, they're pretty accurate.
So is part of our design requirements that this, whatever we build, will be easily expandable?
I will tell you that in the RFP, that was one of the requests, is you need to be able to tell us, what if we had 2,000 high school students, you know, in 30 years? Is there any way that you could expand? And they must be able to answer that question. That was part of the RFP.
But the 1,500 is based on more of the middle to high end versus the low end with some idea of expanding later?
Well, when you build, and when you build a school for 1,500, you know, it can have 1,300, it could have 1,500, it depends how you use the spaces and how you're designing the school. So we're looking at, we know that by 2029, for instance, we will have 1,100 students. That's only 10 years after this is projected to open. That's with no economic development on, in the city, or, you know, we have two developments that are opening this spring in the city, we'll get some students from those. We have a tremendous amount of single-family home. And if you look at the property chart this year, we have the new single-family home number, where we've added a lot of single-family homes in this city over the last couple of decades, especially with, you know, split lot, and just people knocking smaller homes down, and building bigger homes. So that is not even calculated into the natural progression of growth. So that answers that. But 2029, we will, we're projected to already be 1,100.
And one final question. With regard to the PPP, has it, probably private partnerships? If, I understand there's a lot of transparency that is not available for lots of us. But if you're trying to get community input on some areas that are maybe, need to be hidden, are there ways of doing that, so you don't give up transparency? Could you put out a broad set of questions to get community input, some of which were specific to things that were in, that you wanted input from, but others that were not, and still stay within that, you know, the transparency kind of requirements?
I think the, a lot of the work has been done on the school program side, with the visioning process, and the schools of the future process, so that as the evaluation of these proposals is happening, there is a discussion, in a more open sense, about what the community is looking for, for its school program. In terms of the economic development piece, I think we've got more work to do there, to start putting information out to the public about what might happen on the site, and get some initial reaction to it. The Urban Land Institute was intended to do that, to some extent, to lay out, here's what the market would like to build here, what's the public reaction to that? And, but I think it would be helpful for the city council and the school board to get some more feedback on the economic development side of it, perhaps in an open way, without divulging proprietary information, to help, you know, with their decision-making process later this spring. So we will look to put together ways to do that in a way, in consultation with the lawyers who are very actively involved in this, about the proper way to do that.
Tom Johnson. Just picking up on the Plan B idea, and perhaps the need for a Plan B. Based on your experience, have we had so few proposers for a major project in the past? And I'm just wondering about the practical aspects of it. There's been some press commentary on why we only got two, but we only have two, so that's where we are. In other words, when you go out with your detailed guidance, or, you know, the second RFP, do you have to kind of pull your punches a bit, because we only have two? If there are five or six, you know, that'd be different. But presumably, these proposers can drop out any time. And so do you have to be kind of constrained in what you ask for? And then based on your experiences, is there a situation where, because there are only two, they can kind of form a united front in resisting X or Y that the city really wants? And I guess, kind of a related thing, in terms of holding on to two, you know, and not getting down to one, which is not a good situation. One of the proposals, it was the one, I can't remember which is which in terms of the name, but it was the one from the outfit that did not do MEH, that does not have some Falls Church people, okay, the one that, so Mason Green. There was an artist's rendering in there, I'm not sure it was supposed to be there. It was in the version that appeared in the morning announcements from the schools. But, and the artist's rendering was backed up by some commentary in the text. Some of us discussed it, and there was a lot of nonstarter stuff in there. They had a soccer field surrounded by residential housing, and it was great to get a second turf field. Discuss this with the athletic boosters, and that's wonderful. But the noise level, as a practical matter, it's just not going to happen. The noise, there were no lights there, maybe that was intentional. But the noise level, you know, surrounded by all kinds of residential stuff is not going to work. And then there was another residential complex closer to Metro. In other words, there was very little green space, except for the playing fields themselves. No playground space to speak of. It was kind of a paved-over version of what you have up there. I don't know if anyone's seen the UCLA campus, but it used to be a beautiful campus with lots of green space, at least the last time I was there, it was pretty much paved over so much, there are no practice fields for anybody, the football team has to be bussed elsewhere. That wasn't the proposal here, but my point is, very little green space, and a soccer field, you know, where it doesn't belong, and so on and so forth. And so if you went back to them, and kind of said, "Hey, these things are nonstarters," there's a chance at least that they would, if that's, all that stuff was important to Mason Green, that they would drop out, and then we'd be down to one. So I'm just wondering on the practical aspects of just having two proposers, and how you're going to handle it.
Well, you make a couple of points there. One, in terms of a united front by the two, they can't do that, that's illegal. So we don't anticipate that. I anticipate that the city council and the school board are going to be very vigorous in representing the city's interests. And that's, you know, regardless of how many respondents we got. We need a project that is going to provide what the schools need, that's going to have a development program that the community will embrace. All those things need to come together, as well as the financing. And so I don't think that there will be any sense of constraint on the city's side, or the school board's side, in terms of negotiating on the city's, on what we need, and in the city's best interest.
Pete Baer, thanks for having this session. Coming back to the transparency issue, is the RFP the place where the public goes to see what this project is going to look like? And does that really define the top-level goals that the city and the schools have? Or can, might it be that the proposal, when it finally comes around next summer, could look different in material ways from the RFP?
Well, the school program, as we've said, is laid out in terms of its programmatic needs. And so you can go and read through that section of the RFP, and it's lengthy, and there's a great deal of detail there. On the economic development side, we stayed at a very high level, with the express intent and interest of trying to find out what the market's thoughts were about this, about the economic development potential of the site. The Phase II RFP, we do anticipate will provide more guidance on the economic development side, and on the financial structuring side. We'll have to evaluate how far we want to go down that path still with the RFP, the next RFP that goes out. But we will be providing more detail in that document.
Sorry, if we want to know, the public wants to know now what's likely to appear, the best place to look is the RFP, to the extent that that's got detail. And is it really controlling? Or could we be quite surprised when the final project appears?
Well, with the RFP process, there is the ability to negotiate and have an outcome that is different from what you've asked for. That's, when you're putting out solicitations like that, you do have that flexibility. But your initial statement, I would agree with, that that is a good place to go, in terms of seeing what the city and the school board are asking for.
And I think when you talk about change, that's always, because what's a lot of change to one person may not be a lot of change to somebody else. So when you look at the school RFP, things like having an auditorium, we know we need a new auditorium. We know the second field, we need a second turf field, especially as our school, our high school's getting larger. So those things that are in there are aspects that we feel are very, very valuable for the school program. If it says 15 rooms, for instance, box rooms, and a designer comes back and says, "I would really like to do 10, and have two collaborative spaces," after meeting with all of your teachers, that's where you would see some change. Because the RFP has to have the square footage in there, so that they know what they're designing to. But the big driving components of the school program, like auditoriums and gyms and those things, are very important for us, because we have to maintain those for our students.
Hi, my name is Mike Hannigan. There was a comment that I didn't quite understand the context, that was something like, "We're hoping that the commercial side of this covers eighty percent of the school part." Is that?
So the Urban Land Institute, just as an example, they anticipated that through the land exchange, as well as the tax yield from up to 10 acres for private development, could cover between 60 and 80 percent of the school facility program. So that was their sort of quick look at it. We've done some analysis as well.
Who was they?
That's the Urban Land Institute.
Okay.
And the proposals have financing projections in their proposals, and we're evaluating And the, the proposals have financing projections in their proposals, and we're evaluating and trying to truth test those as part of our evaluation of the proposals right now.
Okay, I guess I didn't realize that. I kind of had in my mind that the city was actually going to have some long-term financial gain from this project, but it sounds like we're trying to minimize the, our expenses for a new school or renovation. Is that really the bottom line?
I think that's, I think that's the, the best way to look at it.
And, and I think it's important to note that when you look at the property, as, as a school board, we need a new high school for our kids, we know that. We're renovated and expanded high school. This is all school board-owned land, it's not city-owned. This component is city-owned, and I only say that because, you know, the school board has to look at this piece of land and think about how we can take care of children well into the future. So, you know, we wouldn't have entered into this, this idea of developing any school land unless we felt like it is, could have a benefit to help us pay for that new high school. That is, I think, the driving first point, is how do we get a new school for our kids on our school land? And I think sometimes people think that this is actually city-owned, and, and I say that just again, because this is land that is for kids. It's, you know, it's for our children of the city. And so we're trying to be very thoughtful as a school board to partner with city council and really think about, can we use this land more effectively for the entire city? So it is both, but first and foremost, we need a new school for our kids.
Right, but it's not even enough for that, it sounds like, if the Urban Land Institute is, is correct, is that the bottom line?
Yeah, I mean, the school program is, is, you know, the cost piece of it, that has not been finalized, but we've, you know, in the CIP, it's $105 million. We've got a lot of work to do on, on the cost side, but that's just for, for a city of 2.2 square miles, that's a, an enormously impactful project. And so the economic development piece is, we're exploring ways where we can mitigate the cost of that type of debt service for taxpayers. From the beginning of this process, I have not thought, and we haven't had expert opinion, that 100% of the cost could be covered. But we do think that there is an opportunity to, that the cost can be mitigated, and so now we're exploring to what extent.
Okay, well, thank you. I think I have a new understanding.
We'll go here, the Mr. Kalen.
Doug Gudenkauf, what's the, what's the advantages or disadvantages to selling versus leasing the land for the commercial entity that you're contemplating?
Well, the, there are a lot of pros and cons, and, and so we're trying to think through that process, and one of the reasons why we left it open in the RFP is that we were interested in hearing what, what the private sector thought about it in terms of, of a structure. But, you know, the reason why it's interesting to lease is that under a ground lease, we would get the land back and, at the end of that lease, so say that's 99 years from now, that would be a good thing for our successors. Or 75 years, or whatever the term of that ground lease would be. It would need to be a very long period of time in order for the private sector to be able to finance their buildings and improvements there. But there are some things to think about with a ground lease as well. There might be a discount in terms of the value, because the private sector might prefer a fee simple purchase over a lease. There may be tax implications in terms of the property tax yield, and so those are all the things that are being evaluated. And, but the main reason it is on the table is the very attractive idea of the city retaining that rights the land at the end of, of the lease term. City and school board.
My name's Eric Haylen. My recollection of the ULI meeting was that the 60 to 80% was, would be developed over 10 years, that it was not going to be turning on the spigot and you get 60 to 80%. The commercial development would, would take that time, and that, that was covering of the capital costs, not any operating costs, that would go with an additional $700,000, whatever the final number turned out to be, because the feeder schools have to be expected to grow as well. So there's a whole series of additional costs that will be have. When will we get an actual financial plan to that we can analyze? Because the way this is headed, it's going to be very complex. It's going to be a lot of requests for tax abatements, there's going to be a lot of requests for... The private sector has no interest in sharing risk. The private sector wants to minimize risk, and it will do everything it can do to put the risk on the city's shoulders. They'll want guarantees, they'll want moral guarantees, they'll want a whole bunch of things that only a New York lawyer will be able to interpret. Now, are you going to, do you think we have the people on city staff who will be able to evaluate what the, our independent, independent analysts provide? And finally, to a point that the gentleman there mentioned, if I were in, in business, I mean, I'm sure they don't talk to each other during golf game, and they have no idea what the other is doing, and there's a Chinese wall between them, right? If you want to make this a sole source bid, you just wait long enough until the city can't start over, and then you drop out, and then we're stuck with sole source, period. I think that has to be recognized as well, when you only have two bidders.
Well, you know, there's no question that this is a, you know, the agreement ultimately would be complicated, and the risk allocation between the private sector and the city is something that will be one of the key threshold issues. The gap between the cities having the liability for a school program before the economic development, wherever it might want to happen, that, that's a key challenge for us on this site. And there may be alternate ways that we can try to close that gap, but through a P3 structure, we're exploring ways that we can narrow the, the time gap and also have commitments upfront to give the city as much guarantees as we can get in terms of the value for the land and the future tax yield on that land to help mitigate the cost of the school program. That's what the whole discussion is about. I do think we've got a very good team, we've got people who are, who know this stuff very well, who are working on some of the, the largest P3 projects in the country right now, are on our team. That's one of the great things, I think, about working in Falls Church, is that we live in a marketplace where some of, of the best experts in the country exist on a whole host of fronts, and I think we're very fortunate to have them as part of our team. But there's no question, it's, it's a big challenge, and I think we're approaching it very soberly and very carefully.
Hi, I'm Kathy Kleiman, and thank you all so for, for being here. I share, I share my thanks for your spending this morning and so many mornings and evenings and days with what you're doing. Thank you. So I have three questions, and I can take them one by one. The first, and I apologize I came in late, I just wanted to make sure that the red that we're looking at, we're talking about giving up approximately a third of the land that's inside the red as part of the commercial property, that's the giveaway, is that right?
That would be part of the land exchange, yes.
Land exchange, okay.
Up, up to 30% is the way it was characterized in the RFP.
Okay, but it's, it's within that, that red boundary that we're looking at? Okay.
Right.
What can you tell us, if anything, about the footprint of the new high school that's under consideration in the different models? Because, because we're not operating with any vision of this. And particularly how it might compare to the current layout, which is a very open one? And let me just throw it out, the implications of, say, a six-floor density of a high school, the implications for fire, if there's a fire, the implications for student movement, the implications for bullying in stairwells, as, as somebody who came out of one of those high schools. You know, has this been looked at, but especially the footprint and the overlay? Can you tell us anything about that?
Well, I mean, we're looking at all aspects, and we can't actually say what's in the proposal. What I can say is, what was in the RFP and what has come out of the visioning, and that is that we could live with a four-to-six-story high school. And I will say, you know, the high school also in the RFP called for the administration offices to be in that high school. There are, you know, the new gym, so I mean, footprint-wise, if you're talking four to six stories, and you think of Mary Ellen as being four, I mean, that kind of is the best to look at, because the difference is, this building is, right now, it holds 780 students, this building holds 600. So there's not a huge difference in the number of kids that are in each building, but look at the land space. So that gives you an idea of how much you could compact the footprint to be more like our middle school concept versus a sprawling building. But we also ask for green space in the RFP. So, I mean, we, we want our kids to be able to go outside and do things for STEAM and have that access to go in and out.
Okay, so looking at a, a much smaller footprint probably for the high school?
If, if you didn't do a smaller footprint, you couldn't free up any land, because it goes back to what Tom said earlier, that we need our fields for our kids. And right now, we have a practice field that's right here, it doesn't show up very well on this map, but we need two fields. And, you know, we've held off having a second turf field, just because we know we're going to have something coming eventually for our high school. But if you didn't, if you didn't compact this footprint, there is, there is no land, because this is all athletic facilities that are used literally every day of the week until late at night by the entire community. Even down to the, this softball field is a fraction larger than what you would find in a high school softball field, and that's because it's use, it's community use. It's also an adult softball field. And we don't have a lot of capacity in the city to go out and get other fields, because there's just no land. So all, all of that was built into the RFP to make sure we maintain what we need for our students and for our community.
Okay, thank you. And just a general question, that I'm still trying to get my hands around what you're seeking from the public at this stage of the game. Thanks.
Our, our goal is to get information out and hear comments and questions. That's, that's really what today, the purpose of today's meeting is.
I, I'm a little bit puzzled by your statement that the, that the, that the school system owns this land, the city does not own the land. I, I, could you explain the legal background for that? And how common is that in this area or throughout the country?
Well, throughout the country, it's, it's very common. I mean, when you look at TJ even, Thomas Jefferson Elementary, school board owns the majority of the land, and city owns back on where the little field is. On this land, this is the school board, this is actually city. And that is, it is fairly common across the country, it just depends on the state and what the regulations are, but it is school board-owned land.
I, when my kids were going to school in, in Arlington, they were closing schools. I don't know what Arlington does. The, the taxpayers of whatever municipality pay for that land, so why does the city itself not have control of that land?
It, well, it's owned by the school board. I mean, it goes back, you know, historically, it is school board. But, but I don't want, I don't want to also say that, you know, it's school board-owned land, because it's land the school board owns for children of the city. So that's why, I mean, as a school board, we're working closely with city council to look at school board-owned land that really is there for children, and being even willing to consider, if we need a new high school, can, can we give up part of that land? I mean, that's, it goes back to the very first question that the school board was asking, because it is school board-owned land, that was, that was there for children, and it's been there for many, many years. So this is a very thoughtful collaborative process between city council and school board, looking at how to use this land, but it is owned by the school board.
But I, I'm, I'm sorry, it's paid for by the taxpayers of the city, the school board didn't pay for it. I don't understand why the city relinquishes its, its, its authority over this land.
Well, and to give you a legal answer on that, I would need to go and ask that and find out exactly in Virginia. I don't know the legal answer, but I can tell you, I mean, there are things that are charter-driven in the city of Falls Church, there are some things that are driven by Virginia code. You know, as a school system, you have a right to operate as a school system, I mean, and by law, so it may be tied to Virginia code, that I don't know, or city charter, and I don't know if you know that, Mr. Shields, or not, where that historically goes back to.
Well, one thing that did change, it, it was back in the 90s when, by rule of the state law, school boards used to have the debt on their side of the books, now all debt is on the city's side. And so I think when this was purchased, I think the school board legally had the liability for purchasing it and had title to it. Today, if we were to purchase this, the, it would be on the city's side that the liability for the debt would legally reside, and how we would title the property, I don't know, we'd probably work that out between the city council and the school board. Now, the school board purchased a parcel next to TJ when, in 2005 or so, and they titled to the school board, that was in more recent history.
So, so the taxpayers pay for the land, the, the, the city takes the liability for any of the debt for, for purchasing or for, or for building the land, but the city council has no, relinquishes his control over...
Yeah, well, the, the control, the, the power of the purse is, is, is very powerful, and the, and the council ultimately has the power of the purse. And so any types of land transactions, as a practical matter, if it's titled to the school board, in, in my view, any changes to land ownership is something the council would need to be involved in.
And we can't build a school without city approval. We go through the planning commission, we, you know, go to city council, we have comprehensive agreements, I mean, it, it has to be a joint effort to build a school. So if we have no support from the city, I mean, we see city and schools under one umbrella from that perspective. We go through the same construction process that anybody else does in the city, as far as the planning commission and needing support on the city's side to build a school.
All right, we have a question here, and then we'll come to the middle.
Where will the high school students go while in, it's in construction?
That's a great question.
That's a great question, and it, what will happen is, when we get closer to looking at what we would vote on, on a referendum, and we know what that school would look like, there will be what they call a phasing plan that goes along with that. And that will tell us, for instance, and, and this is just a, for instance, let's say they wanted to build a high school right here. Well, you could still stay in all of this part of the high school, we might only lose one gym, you know, for a while. Or let's say they want to put the high school over here, we may have to play all of our football games away for an entire year or two, just so that we can keep kids in our school. Sometimes they bring in trailers. Again, down the road, when they were doing a lot of work at Marshall, I mean, they had 20 trailers. But the, the architecture firms that we work with, that design our school, know schools, and that is a huge consideration, and that's actually part of our request for proposal as well. They have to tell us how they're going to keep our kids safe while they're building a school. That's a good question.
Well, just going back quickly to the point about the authority of the school board or the, the city council, this particular RFP is a joint RFP by the board and the council. So nothing will happen on this particular campus project unless both the city and the schools agree to go forward. But just, and going back to the cost concerns that were raised, I'd urge people to look back at Wyatt's review of the CIP costs over the next number of years, that was in his budget presentation last spring. And it, it gives you a starting point for understanding the challenge that's ahead if we indeed did the kind of, our, the kind of CIP projects that were incorporated there. Now, I'm not saying that it's, that that's, that's the, the cost that, that comes out of this, but I'm saying that, that poses the challenge for us, and why we're, why we're looking for help from commercial development and different ways to, to do the, the financing structure so that, so that we can overcome that challenge.
And all those budget presentations are available on the city's website at fallschurchva.gov/budget to find them.
Lindy Hockenberry, I just wanted to, Carol probably knows much more about this, but within my experience, the original school site was exactly where the black line is continuing down. And then the city purchased the Keasling track where the UVA and Virginia Tech and the football field is, and that used to be just all farmland with a big barn and everything. Right, Carol?
We were joking the other night about how long ago it was that I was in the know, so to speak. We got back, I think, to the 14th century. We got back, I think, to the 14th century. But there were some things that happened with regard to the city of Falls Church before I arrived in 1960. The high school was built in 54, for starters. It looks, the, the aerial view of it reminds me of nothing more than the International Space Station, where there is room to expand. But, yeah, the site grew, and I can't tell you the exact chronology of it, but it didn't start out that big, and, and it has changed in the meantime. Can't help a whole lot, Lindy.
We advertise this from 10:00 to 11:30, and so we're going to remain here. If there are, any last questions, we'll be here at the front. I also want to thank Cindy Mester for being here, Assistant City Manager, our Public Works Director. Mike was here with his daughter, and he just left. And Lauren Bruce, thank you for being here on Saturday with our planning department. Karen Oliver on the city council is here, arrived just a minute or two after Mayor Tarter's introductions, as well as council member-elect Letty Hardy and school board member-elect Aaron Gill. And so we're all here to answer questions as we're, as we're breaking down. Thank you all again very much for being here this Saturday morning.